Hey there. You're muted.
You'd think I'd know by now.
Me too, I know. How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Ah, good, just a second. Hang on, wait. Why can't I? Uh, hang on a second here. Oh, here we are. There we are.
There we go.
So are there any, uh, no-shows?
We'll see what happens. You're the only one here so far from the commission.
Wow.
I know Brittany sent out the reminder this morning. So.
We shouldn't need reminders.
How's the puppy?
Oh, the puppy is so neat. He's starting agility training.
Oh.
You know what that is? Going through, um, jumping, going through tunnels, hoops, all that stuff.
Nice.
Hey, there's Fireball.
He seems like he would be really good at that.
Oh, I know. He's always hyper. I'm trying to figure out how to keep him calm at my office. So I moved a crate in there and I don't know if that's gonna work, but we'll see.
Yeah.
You know, I read about, um, corgis. I know you've got them. Hey, Fireball.
Good morning.
Good morning. Did you know that they were considered the, uh, steed for elves and fairies?
Oh, I did not know that.
I just saw something about that. I thought it was very cool.
What, what are?
Corgis.
Oh, the, oh, the dogs?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I love corgis.
Yeah.
Adorable.
I have one corgi.
Oh, do you?
My niece is a doctor. Her husband is a vet and they have five.
Wow.
I always thought corgis got ripped off in the leg department, but, uh,
There are stairs throughout my house.
Oh, my gosh.
Get on anything.
What's his name?
Louis.
Louis, oh, that's, that's cute.
Something regal, so.
There you go, King Louis.
Yeah, or Louis Armstrong, maybe.
There you go. So Fireball, how did your Sunday event go? I really wanted to attend and I, my neighbor went into the, uh, ER and I couldn't, so how was it?
Uh, it was really good. I, I think that, uh, you know, it's, it's always hard to tell whether there's more people or less sometimes, but I think that, you know, what's important is that the, the energy was high. Uh, everyone had a great time. Yeah, just overall, it, it just, uh, was a tremendous amount of joy on everyone's part. Yeah, it was really fun.
The music was great.
Yeah, yeah. And we, we kind of came up with an idea to incorporate, I guess we can talk about this a little bit later, but to incorporate, uh, the Malibu Arts Commission into every event. And, uh, there's a way to do that, I think, so we can, we can talk about that at the right time, but, uh,
Every end, every event at your Oxnard place, you mean?
No, no, at the, uh, at the gallery, at the gallery.
Okay, I'm confused, but.
Yeah, that's okay.
Get started.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so is Pete, do you know if Peter's gonna show?
He's right, he's coming in.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, we got everybody, I think.
Yeah.
Amazing.
Hey, happy holidays, everyone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, you're muted. Okay, I'm gonna get started, okay? This meeting will be held via teleconference only in order to reduce the risk of spreading COVID-19 and pursuant to AB 361 and the County of LA Public Health Officer's Order revised September 22nd, 2022. All votes taken during this teleconference meeting will be by roll call vote and the vote will be publicly reported. Uh, no physical location, uh, from which members of the public may observe the meeting and offer public comment will be provided. Please view the meeting, which will be live streamed at HTTPS malibu city.org slash video and slash virtual meeting. Members of the public are encouraged to submit email correspondence to be Salia. Sorry. Sorry, Brittany. Uh, before the meeting begins, uh, members of the public may speak during the meeting through the Zoom app. The city requests that we sign up to speak. Before the item you would like to speak on has been called by the chair and then you must be present in the Zoom conference to be recognized. Please, uh, visit malibu city.org slash virtual meeting and follow the directions for signing up to speak and downloading the Zoom app. Okay, so I'm calling us to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Hardeman.
Here.
Commissioner Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
Here.
Chair Sharon.
Here.
Ex-officio Clifford is absent.
Ah, okay. Didn't he send something saying he'd be here?
Yeah.
Whatever. Okay, so, uh, let's see. Julia, would you like to do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the United States.
The United States of America. And we for which stands.
One nation.
One nation under God.
Okay, Peter, uh, vision statement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Malibu is a unique land and marine environment and residential community whose citizens have historically evidenced a commitment to sacrifice urban and suburban's conveniences in order to protect that environment and lifestyle and to preserve unaltered natural resources and rural characteristics. The people of Malibu are a responsible custodian of the area's natural resources for present and future generations.
Thank you. Um, approval of the agenda?
So approved.
Seconding.
I check in.
Okay, three seconds.
Commissioner, thus Commissioner Jones with the motion and Chair Sharon with the second. Roll call vote, Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Chair Sharon.
Yes.
Commissioner Hardeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Oh. Madam Chairman, can I make one comment on the agenda?
Yeah.
Originally, we had, uh, we're talking about putting on the agenda the, uh, the Arts Commission for the, uh, Chamber of Commerce and I hadn't heard anything whether somebody was gonna appear or not. I see that Daria Hadko, who's the chair, appeared, so she'll probably talk during the, and I say, Daria, you should probably talk during the public comment and then we can make it a more official thing next year.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, so there are no ceremonial presentations, correct? Um, written in oral communication from the public and I see Daria there. Let's see, okay, so, Daria, hello, welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, um, speak to all of you, um, on behalf of the arts community from the chamber. Because we've been trying to, um, put together various arts events, um, involving, um, both visual and performing arts and as well as the, um, Malibu Film Society and, um, we're in the process of, we've been doing this for many months, just in the process of coming up with different ideas as to how to bring more arts into Malibu and, um, Barry had suggested that I, uh, speak with all of you today, um, and to see if we could, uh, maybe collaborate and, um, get some, um, assistance from all of you, um, and see if we could work together. I think that would be, um, fantastic. Um, and on a personal note, I, um, I would like to, uh, see more, uh, music education for the kids of Malibu. Um, I do teach violin, so that's something that, um, and I noticed that on your agenda, um, there's something about, um, keeping arts in education. So, um, that's all something that, um, I think could very well fit into what, um, the, um, art committee is trying to do.
Daria, could you share your email with us? We can't, we can't comment on this because it's not, um, specifically on the agenda, but I would love to bring it up for our next meeting and, uh, have conversation.
Okay, perfect. So yes, I could just put, do you want me to put it in the chat?
Uh, sure, or, yeah.
Chair Sharon.
Yes.
We, we can forward that information to you so that it's not out on YouTube.
Okay, there we go. There we go, thank you.
Oh, okay. Okay, so you don't, you don't need me to do anything then?
I, Daria, I have your, um, contact information, so I'll be sure to share it with the commission.
Okay, perfect.
With your approval.
Thank you.
Great. Daria, I just want to mention that there are a whole lot of events for students, uh, in music around LA and I'm sort of in touch with a lot of it and I'm glad to share that with you offline.
Okay, perfect. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Are there any other, uh, public speakers? No?
No, we do not have any others.
Okay, so let's go with the, uh, committee reports, ad hoc committee reports. Uh, Art and Ed, Kristen, do you have anything to, to share?
I don't have anything. Um, just the usual, uh, poetry workshops are occurring in our, our schools. We should be completed with those workshops by, I think, the end of February, beginning of March. And then, um, our goal is to get out the student anthology by, by the beginning of May.
Great, okay. Um, let's see, public art exhibitions, Julia, Fireball?
Well, we just had our beautiful opening and thanks to everyone, those who came. It was really wonderful. Um, music's fantastic. I think it was so well received and, um, I don't know, I think it's just getting better and better and I love, you know, we had some multimedia stuff that it was, you know, very exciting. I hope you have a chance to go walk through it. Lottie, if you, you know.
I've heard nothing but positive responses for what you guys have been doing there and, and specifically with this one, I think music really added to it.
Absolutely. Um, I can add to that, Julia, unless you have anything else. Um, so it wa, I think it was clear that, that adding music with Eduardo was a, was a great idea and, uh, it certainly added to the ambiance. Um, and, and the goal has always been that every show that we do, we want it to be a little bit better. So once again, I appreciate that Julia said that, so she obviously saw that, that we were expanding. So the idea, and I, this is the right time to bring this up, Kristen, to mention this? Okay, uh, the idea was simply that, you know, I always felt it was important that the, the Malibu Arts, uh, Art Association, uh, with, uh, people like Barbara Freund and, and Derek Schimming, they have a lot of artists to choose from and we want to give them as much as we can because they're the local group. And, uh, we do some shows that are not necessarily local, but I wanted to find a way, figure out a way that we can incorporate them in every show. And that was revealed by, uh, that back room where the music was taking place. People enjoyed hanging out back there because the food was back there, the music. And I thought it'd be great to incorporate three to four artists from that association every time and they just display one piece, uh, and we rotate them so that people not only get art in the gallery itself, but when they go to listen to the music, that room has some art in it also on display, but just for the event, not, not in, for the length of the gallery show. But it, uh, it incorporates them, uh, it incorporates their, um, the awareness for them, for their events, for their, their group. Uh, I think it's a lot of fun and, uh, we bring more people in because obviously we get a lot more people when we have more artists, uh, in the show versus a single, a single person. So that was, that's kind of the thing I'm proposing, uh, just to see what you guys think, if you want to expand on that idea, but we just want the, the gallery to get better each time and, and this, using, using this space back there is a very efficient and, uh, free and it.
I think it's a great.
Expanded awareness.
I had some ideas on that, that we, um, that I could share with you at some point, Fireball, about that.
Awesome, awesome. And we're not limited to them, you know, where, you know, there's an opportunity. If you guys know of an artist that we can introduce back there and they can display one piece of work, you know, that, that's a free for all. So we can, we can bring, you know, um, you know, once it starts getting dense and more people back there, we don't want 20 artists, but I think if we do, uh, at the most half a dozen with one piece, it's a great way to expand that, that certain.
And I'm, I'm guessing you're talking about two-dimensional work, not three-dimensional?
Uh, no, I, I think that, well, depending on, you know, the, if you have a sculpture that's eight feet tall or something that's, that's really big, that might be a challenge, but, uh, I, I look at three-dimensional as, uh, reliefs. Uh, there's a lot of ways to look at that. I, um, I, I think we can do three-dimensional for sure. Just, we just have to be conscious of how big it is, you know?
I think that sounds great. Moving forward, Barry.
Yeah, I think that's a very good idea and I think that limiting it to four is a good one because what you don't want to do is detract from the main exhibit, but also you have an opportunity to people to, to show their art and I think if you limit the, the amount so it doesn't detract, I think that's a nice idea.
Yeah, and it, that probably goes further too, Barry, because if we, if we make it lower, then we can use, you know, I mean, I don't know how many artists are in that association, but there's a lot and we can rotate them and, and everyone gets an opportunity to be in it, which is really cool.
Yeah. Who, uh, who, who juries, who goes in? I mean, from the art association, is that something, uh, Julian Fireball do or is that, does the art association pick their four? How does that work? Or is there someone that's not part of the art association?
Yeah.
Do you have a plan for that?
That's a really good question. Um, it might, I mean, that's something that Julie and I, I think we, we need to discuss, but it might make sense that they, that they would, because we don't know every, all of them.
Uh, let's, let's put it on the agenda for our next meeting. Shall we do that? And, and we can, I know you guys need to put your head together about it and, um, sound like a plan?
Uh, yeah, sure, that's, if that's the right way to go, sure.
Now, excuse me, what, Chair Sharon, what exactly do you want to discuss? Is it?
Adding, adding, um, adding supplemental, uh, works to standard exhibits?
Is that something that we need to vote on and discuss and?
Yeah, it's, I mean, you know, we're, we're picking the artists for the gallery. It's not, it's not that much more complex to pick, you know, a few, few people for that show. I, I think that, you know, Lottie, if you have someone that you have in mind,
I don't.
I'm not saying now.
Oh.
Saying that at some point in the future, if somebody comes up and, you know, I, simply talking to us and we, the answer would all be, would be yes, because it's a secondary gallery type of thing and, and, um, I, I don't know what, what more that we would discuss other than what we're discussing now, but, uh, up to you guys.
All right. Uh, okay, yeah, listen, uh, you guys, thank you for raising your hands. Let's, I want to stay focused and, uh, go ahead. I think Barry, you had your hand up next.
Yeah, I just had one question. Uh, Fireball, have you, have you at all talked to the art association or reached out to them yet? Or this is just you're floating this, uh, now, because I, I don't see they, how they would ever disagree, but, uh, I just wondered if you'd had any conversations?
No, I, I felt it was, it was important to talk, to talk here first before we.
I agree.
With them, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Peter, you had your hand up too?
Yes. Um, I want to applaud Fireball and Julia for introducing a high concept, which I've never heard in the art business before, which is that each show should be better than the last one. Your business and politics and money and everything else, but to just go for raw quality, that gets an A+. Thank you both.
Absolutely.
Well, I think it's kind of good thing finally, uh, known in a word and like some people want to be part of it, so.
Yeah, and I think you guys have done a great job and I really congratulate you. Yeah, Fireball.
Uh, one other thing is that we had, we had a show coming up with, uh, Russell Wox, uh, that was going to be a single-person show, but he, he, since he lives in Montana, it cost him about $1,500 to fly out here and to send his work. And, uh, the idea of doing a show with 25 pieces would be very expensive, so I have an alternate person that we could use, although, um, maybe a little bit more controversial, uh, but very unique person named Pep Williams, who's a photographer. Uh, he just sold two pieces for $40,000 apiece.
Wow.
So, uh, um, uh, thank you, Peter, for saying what you said and, and, uh, I just look at it as, you know, sequels to a movie. We always want the next one to be a little bit better and maybe, maybe a few more explosions, but, uh, uh, we'll continue to, to move forward, so thank you.
Okay, so you're talking about, uh, this guy for a show. What about the Hollywood show? Has anything come of that? That was a conversation in the past. Is that a dead, dead thing now?
No, I know, it's, nothing's dead, nothing's dead. It's, uh, you know, this thing is malleable all the time, you know, it could be, because we have to roll with the fact that, you know, artists may be available and not be available. You know, Russell was really the Hollywood show because his, he works for ILM and his, all of his posters are Star Wars and, you know, Hollywood-based posters. If we're gonna do a Hollywood show that is multiple artists, then, uh, we need to, I need to find those artists. That's, that's, uh, that's quite a bit of work, so, um, need some time to do that, but I know that Pep is available. Uh, he's eager, uh, and he has a massive worldwide audience that would be extremely good for us, probably the best show we'd ever have when it comes to that side. Um, but, uh, I will send you guys a link to his work and, and, uh, as I mentioned, it's controversial, but I think that, that we can handle it and I think it's, uh, uh, it would be something unique, but I'll talk with Julia first about all of it and kind of figure.
Is he local?
Yes, he's local.
In Malibu?
Uh, no, he's local Los Angeles.
Can we, can we talk about having more that is specifically Malibu artists? I mean, that's part of the deal, um, for the Arts Commission is to support our local artists?
We can and, and that's, you know, the, the show that, uh, that we have up right now, 90% of it is local artists. You know, that's, that's our goal and the, the, what I just brought up about bringing local artists into the back is something that we want to do to expand, but honestly, uh, we have to be conscientious of the fact that there's two sides to this gallery. There's a, the side of having good quality art, amazing art. And there's the side, the business side that says if we do, if we spend the time to do an artist uh, or locals and they bring their, their friends and just them, then we have a local show that doesn't really help us expand much. Uh, I think there's, there's room for both. But when we do a single-person show and we're gonna spend an enormous amount of time with that show together, that single person has to be, have, have some value to it other than just, uh, creating awareness for one, one local artist that may not have any, you know, any, um, connection outside of that. So I'm doing my best to be aware and, and Lottie, I'm taking what you say very, uh, to heart and.
Go on, I know, I'm just, uh, I'm just trying to be aware of what's in our, you know, uh,
I think if you know of any that we, you maybe should submit to us, we can look at them and see that the value of that too, you know?
I don't have anyone specific in mind. Really, I don't. I'm just, I'm trying to kind of follow the guidelines of how this was originally set up.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, to promote and help, uh, local people and I fully understand what you're saying, uh, Fireball and Julia, I totally get it. And I have no, you know, I'm not, I'm not dissing you in any way. I just want to bring this up. Um, okay, Barry, you had your hand up?
Yeah, two, two, two comments. I think that, uh, if we have the, I'll call it the back room for nothing else, if we have the back room uh, situation with the art association, we may, we may wake them up to the fact that we have the gallery going, et cetera, and, uh, it may, might be a pre-show, like a, like a, uh, a rehearsal or something. We'll, we'll get to look at some art that they do that maybe expands into a show. I think we, we do have to say, I agree with you, Lottie, in the sense that we do have to say that uh, we give a bit of preference to Malibu artists, but, but that's not the only criteria because we have to see, keep a certain level of quality that has been established in the gallery. Uh, and the, so, um, so I think that, uh, that additional back room is a, is probably a good way to, to educate the, the, the Malibu populace and artists about our existence. The other thing I wanted to ask is Fireball, you mentioned a couple of times that the, the artist you're considering is controversial. In what way?
Well, not, not, not in a way that, that we would be embarrassed to have it up, but, uh, uh, Pep is an African-American. His family's from Africa. Uh, he was a, um, a, uh, a world-class skater in Dogtown in Santa Monica in the seventies, uh, but he, um, he generally goes to prisons and he photographs prisoners skateboarding. He pray, his primarily focus is black and white and they're African-American subjects. Cultural, really, really interesting stuff. Guys covered in tattoos and, you know, a lot of, a lot of stuff that's really quite extraordinary and, um.
I'd love to see his work.
Yeah, so I, I just think it's controversial in that, that, you know, Malibu is the kind of community, we all understand what kind of community this is here, uh, and to have something that's culturally diverse, I think is extremely important.
Yeah, that's great, that's great, great. One, one thing, okay, um, last comment, Fireball.
Last comment, okay. I just wanted to be clear that, that, oh, since we have six shows a year, uh, we have, our last show is a surf show, it's a community show. We have our first show that's a community show and we have the kids' show, which is a community show. So that's three out of the six guaranteed community shows, plus now the back gallery. So that's a tremendous amount of community-focused 100% support and that gives us three shows to be able to do two single-person shows, which could be Malibu or not, and one, uh, group show that can be more diverse. So, um, I just want to, Lottie, for you to understand that I'm, I'm 100% in support of what you're saying and, and, uh, if we can talk offline later on to expand that, I want to do that for sure.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Cool.
Uh, okay, business and community outreach? Uh, sorry.
Was somebody talking or?
That's, that's very, Peter.
Bless you, Lottie.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, I don't really have much to report. Uh, the, the Chamber of Commerce is, is, seems to be focused on trying to get, uh, a Malibu Arts Festival up and running, which we used to have. And I think the next agenda item would be that, uh, that they would come and tell us what they're doing and if there's anything we can do to help. Uh, I think that Barbara, who's the executive director, has been trying to find a, um, a, a venue and she's trying to get the Chili Cook-Off site, but she has some unrealistic expectations of what the city would do to that site to make it more palatable for a, you know, but she's working on it. Uh, and then in the background are a couple of other issues that, that, uh, like the, uh, the, the Malibu Knights concept of, of everybody staying late and having art and all that kind of stuff. Uh, kind of like the one in, uh, France and, uh, but I think it's, it's, and I've, I think it's gotta be a little bit more diverse, uh, than it is now because I agree that we should have a Malibu Arts Festival. I think that's a nice thing. Uh, I just think we have to expand into other things as well, but I leave that to the chair and to the executive director, because I'm just a member. But I just wanted to make sure we, we, uh, and, and next time, we put it on the agenda, they expand a little bit on what they're doing and then the whole purpose is that the right hand knows what the left hand is doing, so we don't bump into each other and try to do the same thing.
You know, uh, there's one thing regarding a art festival, uh, the college is going to be opening in the spring and I'm in touch with the people that are, you know, involved with that. And we've talked about having a, you know, some sort of joint thing with the Arts Commission, with the community, uh, some sort of art fair going on and we might want to think about doing that and involve.
That's great.
Commerce.
That's great.
I've also, for what it's worth, I've also, uh, spoken with Scott about the Film Festival, the Film, uh, Society and put him in touch with a person that is involved with that. So hopefully they'll have a venue inside the new college, uh, soon. Fireball.
Lottie, uh, did you, um, uh, can you confirm that, uh, the, the, the venue inside the college, uh, grounds is a 150 or 200-seat auditorium? Is that correct?
I think it's 100. I think it's 100.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, uh, don't, don't hold me to it.
Yeah.
That's what I.
Is there, uh, Lottie, is. Is, is there, uh, Lottie, is there a way that, uh, any of us could actually get a tour like you had?
I'm trying. I'm trying. I've been in touch with them and everyone's, you know, the holiday, everyone's got stuff on their plate. So believe me, I'm trying. I'd love to have us all go over there and see it. Because it's amazing space. And as I mentioned before, there is a wall that, um, they're open to having, having an event like the Solstice where, uh, an artist can't create something. It's a hu, it's, uh, I don't know, twenty five feet or something. Anyway, things, things are happening there. It's just right now being in touch during the holiday is difficult, but, uh, I'm, I'm on it, man.
When are they, when are they gonna open officially? Do you know?
In the spring.
Okay.
Kristin, do you know, is it like March or something?
Uh, I'm not positive, but I can find out.
Oh, well, so I'm gonna stick it on your plate.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so social media.
Uh, exciting news, exciting news. And that, uh, uh, after a, a super laborious meeting between uh, Kristin and I wasn't. Uh, we managed to, uh, they managed to, um, install a, um, an Instagram page for the commission, which is now fully functional. We have about six hundred followers on it.
Wow.
Yeah, it's very cool. And, and the, the nice thing is that for, for Instagram, it's much, the functionality is much easier, much quicker. Uh, these guys can come to an event and they can literally with their phone, they can take a picture of the event and immediately post it to Instagram in seconds. So, um, it might even be more efficient than, than Facebook. So we're gonna, we're gonna continue to expand on that. So I recommend you go to Instagram and friend us up.
Oh, how do you rate? So is it, uh, so what? It's just Malibu Arts Commission?
Correct. On Instagram.
Who, uh, Barry, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, I, I think it's fabulous. And I think that maybe we could ask the newspaper or somebody, uh, or in the city and the city managers thing to send out a blast that's now, that's now open. And please, uh, sign up so that people know about it. I don't know where you got the six hundred, but that's amazing.
Well, you know, I, I mean, honestly, every bit helps. So it helps for you guys if you have an Instagram page, obviously.
Yeah.
Uh, to go, to go friend it up. But also, um, if you come across, you know, if you're out and about in town and you come across a piece of art that you think is beautiful, or you come across something that is artistic, or, or, you know, if you're just inspired and you're out in the valley somewhere, take a picture of it, uh, send it to Kristin and they'll post it on Instagram. Uh, because we want to support not only art in the, uh, in just Malibu here primarily, but, uh, we want to inspire people. So if you're inspired by something, take a picture of it, shoot it to her and it'll be up in twenty seconds.
Excellent. Barry.
Well, uh, is, uh, Kristin, how do we best, uh, for example, approach the newspaper? Cause you could talk to Steve about putting a, an announcement in his, you know, in his, uh, thing, but, uh, do you want one of us to approach the newspaper? Do you guys approach the newspaper? How do you wanna do it? So that maybe they do a little tiny article or something about us? Cause it's about time.
What do you think, Kristin?
Vice, does Vice Chair Lawrence want to speak to that point?
Oh, okay. The question was addressed to you. That's why I called on you. Farball, go ahead.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, that I don't think that they're gonna write, do a write-up on us about an Instagram page. Uh, they certainly do it on every gallery show that we do. Um, because they're, they're doing the same thing. They're trying to get people to follow them on Instagram. So, um, social media doesn't really work that, that, that way when it comes to specific pages, but we can certainly reach out to them anytime we do an event or anytime that we have significant things going on, uh, that they want to cover. Um, but I don't, I mean, I know Nick and Haley at the Times. And, um, we're working on a few other things with them, but, uh, uh, we probably have to stick to events. So.
Uh, what, but you know, they, they publish every, uh, every issue, a list of what's going on in Malibu on a daily basis. Maybe they could just have a standard thing where, uh, they just, maybe they just mention, and there's also an Instagram page for the Arts Commission, if you want to see what's going on there or something like that.
Worth a try?
Yeah, yeah. You wanna, you and I should talk maybe and we can, if you know them, maybe we can just talk to them.
Yeah.
See if they do that. Yeah.
Or maybe we could just have a, uh, a regular column in the paper that had links and, you know, they've got a calendar section that has everything. And if we could throw in a blurb or something like that, just to get us out there.
Yeah.
Farball.
Uh, one thing I'm working on is they, they came to me and wanted me to write an article weekly about cars in Malibu, something having to do with that. Uh, it's not hard for me to drop, uh, uh, the Arts Commission Instagram or anything else within that piece, uh, weekly. So, um, that's kind of my goal is, is to, to incorporate what we're doing here into something like that. So.
Yeah, let's talk. Let's talk. Absolutely. Julia.
We could do something simple, like just create a little QR code and then pop that.
There you go. There you go.
Put that in there and they just boom, opens everything up or something.
Yeah, great.
Okay, so, uh, Solstice, um, Kristin, do you wanna do that or?
Um, sure. I can provide an update. Um, as you know, we have two agreements that need to be approved to complete this Caltrans project at Solstice Canyon Creek. We're currently under review. Um, there's been a lot of back and forth. And I have a meeting with Caltrans tomorrow to kind of get the final details in order. So I can provide a update to the commission on next month with some kind of final, final product, product update.
So we can't, we can't even approach city council with our choice of artists and let them know that they've been selected until this is done?
Correct.
That cuts it down to six months to create all this stuff? I mean, this is really.
It's unfortunate. And, um, there's been some additions by Caltrans that weren't proposed originally.
Such as what?
Um, maintenance wasn't proposed originally. Installation is now being, um, proposed to be done by the city.
Yeah.
And so it's just some, some things that we really weren't expecting. So some negotiations are in order.
Do you feel that this is, uh, going to move forward or is there gonna be more back and forth? Any thought about?
I will, I will know tomorrow, kind of their stance.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, oh, Peter, I'm sorry. Please.
Kristin, um, they're holding this up. Um, it seems to me that we're entitled to some latitude in some direction because of that.
Yeah.
For example, if this now three-month delay, uh, I think it's three months, is, uh, I, I just don't see this getting done before the end of January.
Right.
Are we entitled to some additional money? Because when you have that kind of delay, it creates costs. And I think that is something we should ask for, such as an additional fifty thousand dollars. Could be twenty-five thousand dollars. I just, or we get an extension in time of three months.
Yeah.
Cause this puts an astounding amount of pressure on the artist and it's just plain unfair.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Kristin, what do you think?
Artists are not buffalo.
Yeah.
I know there's some, um, timelines with the grants. And that was, I think that's going to be a problem, an issue that Caltrans has to make a decision on. So.
Okay. Um, and you, can you let us know after your meeting, kind of where all this is? Great. Okay. Let's move on then.
One quick, I had one question. Uh, Christian, um, as I recall, they proposed a budget of around two fifty, something like that. How much are we paying the artists and how much do we have for, I don't know if it goes to Malibu, the Arts Commissioner or what? How, how is that, how's the cash flowing?
Um, I believe, and, uh, Vice Chair Lawrence, please correct me if I'm incorrect. Um, the artist budget was around a hundred and fifty thousand. We were going to, we needed some money for installation and upkeep if that was going to be put on the city.
Right.
So any money that we didn't spend doesn't go back to the city. It goes, you know, it's unclaimed. So, um, we do have a few administrative costs. Um, but I don't think we're going to spend the whole amount. Uh, but it just kind of was dependent on.
So unclaimed, unclaimed means it goes back to Caltrans or what?
Uh, just the granting, uh, organization.
So that's possible to get that?
Caltrans.
I believe it's through California Water.
Um, oh, I see. How, we, the city do not get to keep it.
Correct.
Uh, is it possible to ask about that? Because it would enhance the, the Arts Commission budget, for example, if we could. I mean, cause they came to us and said, look, we were offering X, which I think was, and then plus Y for administrative costs. I think they offered fifty thousand, if I remember correctly, maybe it's in the minutes. Um, and maybe we should just let that go if that.
I agree. I agree. I think we need to, uh, negotiate if this is some money that was granted or, uh, you know, uh, approved as a budget, we need to be able to find ways to use it all.
Well, the money would only be allowed to use on the project itself. We can't take that money and use it.
Yes, the Arts Commission can, can use it to promote the project or, um, you know, exhibit the, you know, I mean, there are all kinds of things we can use it for. We don't have to give it back.
Yeah, even for, for example, even if you had a couple of tours of it where there were artist tours or, or things of that nature to promote it.
Yeah.
Uh, and because it's gonna be fairly hidden unless you really know about it.
That's right.
So maybe we have a, you know, we put it into a PR budget or something like that to say, here's something we've done that's kind of hidden art. And then all of a sudden it becomes hidden art, you know, and it's kind of cool.
Exactly. We can, we can make a pamphlet out of it. We can do all kinds of stuff where we can use that fund. Where it would go to the Arts Commission, Farball. I'm sorry. I, I don't mean to leave you out here.
Well, I appreciate that considering I'm the ad hoc for this. So a lot of the, the questions that you're asking, Kristin, she's been very politically, um, nice about what's going on. And, and you guys are correct in that, you know, the money is not going to be given back, but the money was supposed to be earmarked for the project, to be able to support the project in all the ways that the ideas that you guys are, are proposing. But, uh, as she mentioned so eloquently, uh, the parameters of the deal are being shifted by Caltrans. And this is what she's trying to deal with this week. And there's nothing that can be done until those, those shifts are, uh, are dealt with. And, uh, and one of the options based on that shift is to not do the project because of that shift. You know, when in, in business, you don't put a deal together and then change the parameters of the deal after you've done that. So that's kind of what's happening right now. So we have to be delicate about how it's handled. She's gonna handle it this week. Uh, if all goes well and we can, uh, deal with that, then we'll go back to the position of what you guys are suggesting to be able to use those monies. Another option is that if, uh, what they, one of the deals that, one parts got shifted was that now that money would have to be used for installation. That's not, not the bed we got into.
Hmm.
So, uh, so the only thing that can be done is, uh, is the meeting that's coming up this week with, uh, Kristin, and she was being very eloquent about not getting into it too much. But since, since I'm kind of on the other side, I just want you guys to know that everything you're saying is true. And, uh, and, and what we want to do. So we just unfortunately, our hands are tied at the moment.
Okay. Peter, you're also part of the ad hoc. Do you want to add anything to this?
Yes, I do. And that is, at the end of this, if there's ten thousand dollars left over and we've had an opening and we've done the social media, uh, blitz, we've done all of that. We have ten thousand dollars of leftover. I think that we should arrange one way or another for that money to go to the artist.
Agreed.
We need to be in the business of protecting an artist, especially as one who's gonna work this hard.
Correct. I agree.
Oh, great. Barry.
And I think one argument is we shouldn't be penalized for bringing in, in under budget. Uh, because we could have given the artist more money if we wanted to. And the fact we're doing it to perpetuate the project should be recognized as a benefit to what they were trying to do in the first place.
Okay. All right. So I guess we, uh, we need to wait to hear from you, Kristin, where we are with this. And I'll look forward to that. Um, okay.
Kristin.
Here. Yeah.
Kristin, I want to thank you very much for your, what appears to be very clever and ongoing support of this project. Uh, what you're doing is not easy and we really appreciate it.
Yes.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Agreed. Uh, consent calendar. Um, I always get stumped here. Is there, are there any changes or anything we want to do with this?
So you could, you approve the consent calendar as a whole?
Okay. So no changes. Can we, uh, just move to approve?
Yeah.
And move that we approve?
My second.
Okay.
Dallas Chair Sharon with the motion and Commissioner Holland with the second roll call vote. Chair Sharon?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, uh, there's no old business. So the new business is of poetry stones.
Can I give a quick staff update?
Please.
Thank you. Um, so the item before you today is regarding poetry stones at Legacy Park. And I wanted to give the commission just some background about the stones and then what you're going to be reviewing today and locations that, uh, the poet laureate committee is proposing. So, um, currently there are three stones located at Legacy Park. Uh, two of them honor our former poet laureates Ricardo Mignoje Barra and Ellen Reich. And the third stone, um, was installed in twenty eighteen. And it's the only stone we have out there for a student. So Mandy Mulligan, um, she has a one-line poem. And, uh, she was involved in our, uh, arts and education program. So, um, those are the three stones there now. And the stones are located along a pathway from the amphitheater and then they lead towards the anchor of Malibu's legislature. We add these, we added these stones at Legacy just as, um, to highlight the importance of arts and poetry and literature in our community. So today, the commission is being asked to re-own, approve the installation of two poetry stones. Uh, one is for former poet laureate John Strulow, Dr. John Strulow. And our current poet laureate, Anne Buxey. Just some background information about Dr. Strulow, uh, who was appointed as our third poet laureate. He only served one year. Um, Ellen Reich unfortunately passed away uh, during her term and then Dr. John Strulow stepped up and we wanted to fill that void of not having a poet laureate. So he served the one year. Um, during his term, it was during the pandemic. So he had to make a lot of adjustments, but he was great. He, um, provided virtual poetry workshops and, um, did our first community anthology where we took poems from all over the community and compiled them into a one anthology. Uh, he selected a poem he wrote called Sea Turtle. That's a, that, that poem's included in the packet, but if you guys want to see it, I'm happy to show it. And Anne Buxey is our current poet laureate. She is amazing. She's definitely one person that wants to promote poetry wherever she can. Um, her term ends in September twenty twenty-three. And she is constantly figuring out ways to have new poetry in our community. So, um, this year she's doing quarterly. It's called Poetry Jubilation. We've had uh, Commissioner Jones as a part of that program. And, um, Verse About Town is a program where people can submit poems and we put them up at city parks and the library just to highlight people's work in town here. And, um, Ms. Buxey selected her poem, Something Pushes. Um, this is a map of our current locations for the poetry. Um, this is a map of our current locations for the poetry stones. Um, the two red Xs are where the committee is proposing the add the new poetry stones. The green X is where the anchor from Malibu sculpture is. Uh, the blue and purple Xs are. Uh, poetry stones from our former poet laureates and the yellow is over there by the snake mosaic, um, in there. And then that's our student poetry. Stone and the idea is just to kinda create a poetry path where people can walk along here. Read different poems from all of our poet laureates and eventually add maybe some. Uh, displays or temporary poetry that we can have for Verse About Town. There's kind of a picture leading towards the anchor from Malibu, um, sculpture. On the right-hand side is Ellen Reich's poetry stone. Kinda here is a kind of a basic idea where the new poetry stones would, would go.
Right.
Just a close-up, one by, uh, a bench. And then one on the other side of the tree there. And we'll, um, when we place the poetry stones, we prep the space with decomposed granite and kind of a border. We'll plant some new plants over there, uh, pollinator, usually plants will, will be in the space. So the proposed poetry stone, um, that we want to use. Um, is here pictured on the right-hand side. It's one stone now, but, um. Dr. Struoff and Yan Buxi asked that we cut it into two. They both really like this stone, so that is doable. And so, um, Dr. Struoff's stone will be about eight hundred pounds and you see the dimensions there. And, um, Ms. Buxi's will be about seven hundred. Six dimensions there. So I think that's it. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Peter.
Yes, Kristen, are we going to have any kind of? Event attached to the installation of the poetry stones?
Yes, we have in the past. We've done, um. A small event out there. We usually include, um, poetry readings and of course honor our poet laureates and we'll just have. Some light refreshments, so that is definitely in the works.
Great, great. Barry.
I have two questions. First question is, what is the amphitheater?
It, I don't think you're gonna be able to see it, but, um, do you know where the mosaic, um? There's like a mosaic snake. And then, so that's where this yellow. Um, areas and then right here is a very small amphitheater. It has the, um, it's looking out towards the. It's called, oh, the water is the lake, but it's retention basin. Um, and it's just a very peaceful, nice place that we occasionally have poetry readings at.
The other question I had is. Is this something that's going to? Happen automatically each year with every poet laureate, or is it? Just particular ones that we recognize or, I mean, for example, if we had one year where we had a terrible poet's laureate. Are we gonna give him a stone? Uh, how does it work?
So a poet laureate is, um, assigned or appointed, uh, every two years, so. We're on our fourth line, new fourth stone, so it's, um, we leave it up to the committee to. Kinda decide if they wanna add a stone. We, um. I, I didn't mention this, but this, this approval also goes through the Parks and Recreation Commission. Because it is an added element to a park. So Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed it last night and they approved it. And they had the same concern, you know, how many stones are we gonna put in here and? Um, the comment from them is, you know, we can always add it in different parts. Was their kind of suggestion. Um, we could add it as not as a stone, but maybe as a brick that has been brought up at a committee meeting. Um, so I think it's moving forward. We'll just have to evaluate each. Each, um, poet laureate and then make a decision based on kind of the time, the time.
Okay, uh, Tim.
Uh, i- if you guys have, I mean, I'm assuming you guys have been to this park, obviously, but, uh. Um, I tend to walk this park at least once a week and I've been taking pictures at a particular spot. For the last, since it was built, uh, it, it's a absolutely stunning park and it's becoming an art park. Uh, with all the. There, um, I should know the poetry stones along that walk is fabulous, um. You guys have just done a really great job with this and, and it. It makes for my own personal experience walking through, uh, wonderful, so. Um, I'm all for it. I think it's, I think it's really coming along nicely.
I agree with you. I'm there every week as well and, uh. It's a wonderful experience. My only concern is I know a couple of times people have complained about, uh, homeless. And all that issue, is it, did, anything ever happen with that?
Um, we occasionally have, uh, unhoused individuals at the park. We have. I don't know if you know, but we have, um, a new. Assistant in our public safety department and he, that's his focus is working on. Um, helping unhoused individuals and he works very closely with, um, LA County Sheriff's Department, so. We have seen a reduction of, um, people kind of camping there, um. Hanging out during the day is. Does happen.
All the time, yeah, I see people sleeping there and, you know, whatnot, uh, uh, Farval.
I was just there just, uh, you know, a week and a half ago. And my wife walked through it first. We were at the, at the, uh, the dog place and she saw six people. But she also saw a sheriff's, uh, deputy vehicle actually drive into the park. Go through the whole park and then two hours later, when I, when I walked through, everybody was gone. So, they're, they're definitely doing their job.
Great, great, good. Peter.
First, uh, to Barry's point. All of these poet laureates are poets. So we have a pretty good idea. In terms of published work is what to put on a poetry stone, so I think we're safe on that one. Now, if the person turns out to be someone who stifles freedom of speech and. That's a different matter, but I think it's so remote. That we should not worry about it and just continue with this program full steam ahead. To that end, Kristen, I have a question for you, which is, um. I'm in regular touch with Georgia. Uh, at Parks and Rec and. Uh, she and the poetry program, Parks of Rec and Poetry Program, which falls under our EGS. Are both anxious to get a three-D printer. She for plant identifications, which would be a small-scale three-D printer. And we for larger ones to be able to put poetry easily throughout the park. You and I talked about putting various boxes in. This would be. Infinitely cheaper because we could just nail them directly into the dirt and remove them later. Or we could put them on, on walls. Um, and my understanding is that, uh. A large-scale three-D printer costs about five thousand dollars and a small one is a thousand. So let's just say all in with instructions and everything else. Tax, it's ten thousand dollars. Is this, is there any hope of getting this money to get this printer, which would? Dramatically increase the visibility of both organizations?
Um, we've done some initial research, um. It's kind of interesting because I don't know as far as like the plastic involved in printing. That's the part we're still kind of figuring out, um. And also, um, from my understanding, it takes quite a bit of time to print. So we're also looking at kind of the, the staff time involved in printing, so. It is, it is some, we've done some initial, uh, research on it and. I did talk to Georgia about it, you know, maybe like last month. Um, so we're still, we're still in kind of the decision phase.
Kristen, is there any way we can, uh? Suggest that we need three-D printing for the Solstice project? To promote various, you know, maybe. Labels or, you know, something to do with that, that we could use funds from that to, you know, purchase one?
Um, not. I'm not quite sure what we would. We, we just have to have something concrete and it.
Okay. Alright, Farval, grab your hand up.
Uh, well, I guess that, that, you know, initially that question goes back to, uh, to Peter, so. Uh, cuz I know a fair amount about, about three-D printing them. Uh, Peter, what, what is it that you? Um, that you propose that you would want to three-D print to support this, this thing because it is plastic and, uh. Um, it's not something that could do stone, obviously, but what, what, what did you have in mind? Are you and Lottie, uh, ideas? As to what we'd want a three-D print?
I'm gonna speak to that. What we want to do is to print complete poems that can be nailed into. The dirt on either side of the poetry rock where the stones are. Um. On a temporary basis, they'd be there for a month, maximum three months. And, uh, the idea would be that they would be readable from a height of six feet. Which would, uh, take into account someone who's as tall as six foot five, being able to look down and read a poem. We looked at various other things, ways of doing this. One was to create stainless steel boxes. Um, and to drop and print the poems on, on foam core board and simply drop them in. This works. The problem is moisture, which is the, 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 uh, and also the, the dirt. Because we'd have to have a, a lid on top that was clear and be able to support a human being, which means it's bulletproof glass. Um, and. You, the, the bolts involved. Have to come up from below with the screw part on top, which. Prevent any dirt getting in there so that they would work. Uh, we were estimating that to put in four of these, for example, would cost about ten thousand dollars. If we bet the three-D printer. If we put a printout for poems. We can just go over there with, with three-inch nails and nail them into the dirt and then return the poems to the poets. At conclusion of the run and this would get us poetry in there. Uh, this was, I think, Lottie's idea. Um, in the poetry walk to make it a cohesive space as opposed to mounting them on columns somewhere else. Or such as over by the new Whole Foods. Um. But to make it a comprehensive space, that's the point. And even in color, the, 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 the plastic could be white with black letters, could be placed. White with red letters, none of, all of those options are on the table. There's, there's no restrictions being discussed here.
Okay, Julia, you had your hand up.
Yeah, um, will this become, is this our discussion on this now? Because I, I have, I have. Just feelings about, you know, plastic and, and our environmental impact and just the. It's what we do in Malibu and stuff and. I like.
So what is your? What is your comment?
But I think we should avoid that plastic, honestly, and have more natural materials. That would be my feeling as.
Uh, as these works would be returned to the artists, they would be permanent and that's a very good use of plastic.
Okay, Barry, you haven't, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, um, I wanted to ask a couple of things. Is there a? Um, I think we have to be, this may sound funny, but I think we have to be careful that we don't. Um, put so much stuff up that we detract from the stones that we are putting up. In other words, that, that. Um, I don't know if you have a limit on the number of, uh, of poems that you are thinking of doing. But I think, you know, I think.
The limit is for at any given time.
Oh, good, because I think that what we don't wanna do.
It would be.
As much as I love poetry is to, is to clutter up the park with a whole bunch of signs. Uh, because the beauty of that park is the fact that it's kind of pristine and. And I think the stones are an appropriate way to, to be in the park. Uh, with the poetry and, uh, so I kinda tended to agree a little bit with Julia. In that does the plastic kind of bring down the stones in a way or detract from the stones aside from the environmental impact, but. But, uh, I think we have to be careful that we don't, uh, take away from the stones.
Okay, Farval.
Um, I, I think, you know, we're kind of maybe concentrating on the Ps at the moment. This is all great ideas, but I, I think we have to kind of. Move forward with these stones and, and get an approval for this, right?
Sure.
Okay, I'm, I'm all for it. I think that the way it's, it's laid out is great. Um, I'm still open to talking about other ideas, but that's other stuff.
Okay, I, I'm in favor of this too. I think, uh. Um, I like the placement. I think that's just fine, so I, I move that we approve this.
I'm gonna force it.
That was Chair Sharon with the motion and Commissioner Jones with the second roll call vote. Chair Sharon?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so, uh. Farval, I, I agree with you. I think. Do we move this to the next meeting, uh, you know, further discussion about this or? Uh, do we talk offline about your, your thoughts about three-D, uh, printing for this? How?
Um, you're asking me?
Yeah.
Oh, um, I, I think that if we're gonna, if we're gonna discuss it. Um. I, I think some, some, some investigation should happen before we do. I don't think we should just, just put this off till next month unless someone is going to actually. Uh, come up with a, a solid idea as to what this is versus making the focus about being, getting a printer. And.
We, we have, uh, Peter and I worked on this in the past and we did have a very solid idea about. Creating a, um, where the, where the bricks are, the, they're not bricks, they're really large stones that you walk off. Okay, uh, creating a, a thing that is. Uh, like a frame with a palm underneath it. Um, like Peter was saying, we can't find something that prevents moisture in there. So we're talking about, uh, creating three-D printing for the palm under there. That would be the idea.
Does that solve the, the, the problem?
Yes.
Well, it helps, you know, it helps rather than having, uh, paper or parchment, whatever, that can get ruined very easily.
Yeah, right, right. Um, well, yeah, I mean, if it's something that you feel. Uh, you know, that you can actually solve and we all think it's a good idea and. Uh, you know, the getting the printer is probably, probably secondary. To the solidity of the idea that it's something that we all think, ah, that'd be really cool and we should do that. Um, so.
Do you do a lot of three-D printing? Is that a part of your, um, wheelhouse there?
Um, I don't personally do it, but I, you know, I, my, my son's a sculptor in the film industry and he, he is really, he has, has a three-D printer himself. And I see the, the, um, the things that he can do. Uh, but, you know, to, to print, to print letters. Uh, you, uh, and that's all we wanted to do. You, you literally could go out and buy plastic letters.
Right, right.
You don't need to three-D print them if you're talking about spending, uh, three hundred dollars on, on letters versus ten thousand dollars for a three-D printer. So if it just comes down to us, uh, you know, laying, um. Laying those letters into a, a patch of concrete and having it there. Uh, I, I just have to get my head around it exactly, visualize what you guys are saying. Maybe that's just a, a copy conversation.
Maybe, maybe Peter and I ought to get together again and, uh, make this a little more solid.
Yeah, yeah.
And Peter lets you and I talk offline and, okay.
Yes, and could I also make one addition?
Yeah, please.
But the high concept here. Is. That the stones are permanent. And thereby known figures who have known bodies of work. These would be contemporary poems. Which would change. On a very regular basis. As envisioned, we may, uh, actually, depending who the poet laureate is, who would do the selecting of the poems. We would be able to, in effect, publish forty-eight poems a year. That's a pretty fant, that's if we change them once a month. If we change them every. Two months or three months, obviously, the number diminishes. Uh, that's a lot of publishing in a very public way. in an, in a a park that I regard as an absolute jewel. From a landscape architectural point of view and it's a public service point of view, and it just plain beautiful point of view. If this fails, we can simply stop. If we put it down, everybody hates it. I'm very open to doing a trial run with somebody else's three D printer. I'm also ha, open to having this be subcontracted to someone who has a three D printer. Um, Georgia uh, has a different need, which is uh, plant ID cards, which could be done on a large scale three D printer. Sycamore tree. We have a lot of those. Um, so we're open to all options here. We just want it to happen.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's let's you and I continue that conversation. Pa, uh, Barry.
Uh, may I, may I suggest rather than we do this as a kind of a uh, on the fly kind of discussion that you come back with actually the plan and maybe a a picture of something just so we could kind of conceptualize it and understand it a little bit more. Because I think the concept is a great concept. Uh, getting the poetry out there and changing it into a kind of a poetry garden, at least in one part of it. I I just think we need to look and see what it looks like and how it would work.
Okay, shall we, shall we move on or what?
We're kind of getting off topic.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
One more thing.
Okay, final comment. Peter.
I'm happy to take any member of the commission who wishes to see the space in my, in hand to show you what it is, what we're proposing to do on the ground at any time, just.
Okay. Me too.
Can we do that uh, with the brown hat?
Okay.
All right, that's what I thought.
Peter can take one, I can take one.
Bonnie, I will do this.
Okay, so uh, let's see, staff updates. Kristen.
All right, I just have two quick updates for everyone. Um, our Malibu Arts Center survey, we are on the, man, I'm on the final, final, final little bit. So I'm gonna try and get it out today, but I put the twenty second tomorrow, just in case I need an extra little bit of time. But we are releasing that. I'll send everyone um, information about the, I'll I'll create a QR code. I'll send everyone the link. We'll get it on social media. We're doing a marketing package for the Arts Center survey as well. So um, the commission decided to close that on January thirty first, uh, twenty twenty three, so um, I'll get it to everyone by tomorrow.
Kristen, I I just want to thank you because I know Julie and I have been sending stuff back and forth to you and you've put it all together uh, for us. And that, thank you. You've done a great job. I really appreciate it.
Um, my next update is artist David Kramer. Uh, his artwork came to the commission who approved it, putting it up at City Hall for a year. So we put it up and here it is. Um, we put it in the window at the top floor and uh, the artist came by. He loved it. He loved the location. We're getting, Amanda got a name plate uh, for him, which will be installed if it's not already uh, by next week for sure. So um, he was happy with everything and I wanted to thank the commission for their support.
Great job.
Thank you.
Those are all my updates.
Very nice installation.
Yes, yes, indeed.
Uh, question. There is is uh, from Kristen. Is the city doing another survey about what they want space to be done? Because there was some discussion about doing a survey about what they wanted uh, the land, the unused land in Malibu to be for.
I'm not aware of that. It's not on the council work plan.
Yeah, let's just.
Mission is doing it individually. Um, but I.
Yeah, let's, let's just send it out ourselves because if we wait for them, it'll be forever, you know? Uh, and I I I want to say one thing, maybe this is not the proper place, but I want to thank Kristen for jumping into this uh, this uh, kind of uh, cauldron of stuff. And I know, you know, uh, uh, you've taken on a lot more responsibility with what you're doing. And believe me, all of us appreciate it because uh, we're getting things done and uh, and you're being ver, you're working very hard to help everybody and we really appreciate that.
Thank you. Recognize that, yeah, thank you.
We're gonna get her a cape for Christmas. So many different colors.
Uh, let's see, Commissioner reports. Uh, Farball, you want to start?
Uh, sure. Uh, I just wrapped on a uh, TV show for uh, oh, since this is being filmed and it will end up in the paper, I can't say what it is. It's a show for Hulu. Thank God, I just caught myself. I'd be in big trouble. Um, so did that. Uh, unfortunately, uh, a little less than a week ago, I lost one of my dogs. So I'm still very raw in the uh, uh, he was sixteen, uh, beautiful dog. That was the reason that we were at the pet hospital. Uh, pretty horrible day and it's been a very difficult week, as I'm sure you guys know what that feels like.
Yeah.
Um, so I can't talk about it too long, otherwise I'll start blubbering, but uh, uh, lots of great things. Uh, you know, our our granddaughter is coming along. She's uh, um, we're having her her first Christmas and uh, all is well in the world. So thank you to you guys. Uh, we've had a really great year. I'm very proud and blessed and grateful to be doing this with you guys.
No, we're very happy to have you here. Thank you. Julia.
Um, well, so sorry about your dog.
Thank you.
Um, yes, heading into the holidays and um, that usually means uh, I just finished a big, huge uh, production at the Malibu Elementary School, which was cute, you know, like all the kids, you know? It's always, you know, it's always a big whole thing, the costumes and singing a big gospel number then and people crying. It's really cute. It's great. It was awesome. But it's a lot of work. So honestly, it doesn't matter if it's, you know, a Broadway production or something like that. It's always still a lot of work. Um, and that's about it. I'm just spending a lot of time in my uh, vocal booth and yeah, getting ready for the holidays. So that's it.
Peter.
Oh, my next book, uh, which is called Gratitude, which is about um, my wife Charlotte's battle with multiple myeloma, uh, for which she had us a uh, bone marrow transplant on February sixth, two thousand twenty is in, and she is alive and functioning. Uh, very much so. Uh, that uh, book is in rough dummy, so I'm hoping to have it in print in about a year.
Wow.
Uh, which is the, for me, I read some of the text at the last poetry reading and uh, I I write what are called prose poems. Uh, and it was well received. I was very moved. Uh, on a very positive note, uh, our puppy is going to, our oldest dog died in October. Uh, our puppy arrives on the twenty eighth of uh, this month, December, in seven days.
Incredible.
What kind will it be? You're in for a lot of work.
You need to be passing out cigars.
It's a, it's a, it's an Airdale. It'll be our, it's Airdale number six.
Wow.
And uh, we're still playing the uh, Name the Puppy contest, which is my wife's favorite contest. What I can tell you is uh, her AKC registration name is, which was Charlotte's name, uh, is Back in a Flash.
Hmm. Here, I thought it was gonna be badass.
My choice, I'm lost.
Hey, well, we want a full report in January. Okay, we want photographs and everything else.
To deal.
Barry.
Um, I don't have too much to report as as Fireball will know, being in the industry and the other view during the last month, uh, because the whole uh, film and television industry in essence closes down for the next two weeks. Uh, so everybody wants everything done at the last minute and finished before the end of the year, which is two weeks before the end of the year. So I've been uh, pretty well tied up in in cleaning up a lot of deals. Um, I am, I I am continue to be determined to uh, work with the chamber to get them uh, to to kind of work with us and uh, because they have ideas and they have in their, in a funny sort of way, uh, they have more access because they've got a two thousand uh, uh, mailing list, uh, which can be helpful to us. And I think that I'm still of the the opinion that we've got to get the uh, uh, the art in in businesses and things of that nature, just to continue the concept of rolling out art in in uh, uh, in Malibu. So uh, other than the uh, my wife exhibits closes at the end of this month. It's been very successful. Uh, and uh, uh, that's uh, that's about it for me.
So.
And uh, I I don't have much to report. I'm just trying to uh, juggle between business studio, new puppy, cats and puppy relationships. Um, HOA, whatever, uh, life's a bit of a scramble right now, but I've, I greatly appreciate all of you being here and everything you, you know, how you participate. And I think, I think the commission is on great footing. I'm looking forward to the new year. As far as adding uh, future agenda items, uh, you guys want to throw out what you want to add at this point or at least do it by the tenth?
Do we, do we get to hear Kristen's uh, what's going on with Kristen this weekend?
No.
Sorry, okay.
I I'd like to put on the uh, uh, agenda, the uh, uh, the uh, Chamber of Commerce Arts Commission to give them, give them a little bit more of a presentation so we can ask them questions and see if there's a way we can help.
That's a good idea.
Good. Shall we also, Peter, should we also add the uh, uh, poetry situation, uh, poetry path?
I would, I would like to add that to the agenda if it's possible.
Sure, let's do it. What else? Julia?
I'm just gonna ask Barry if we could talk to Barbara about getting out our survey through them as well.
Oh, good idea. Uh, why don't you and I talk about it and uh, that's an excellent idea.
Yeah.
I'd like to toss something out if we could, maybe just to get the ball rolling on uh, the the initial idea of crosswalk art that we had talked about a couple of months ago. Um, uh, working, I I've I've mentioned it to the city manager and to uh, uh, ex-mayor Paul Grisanti. They love the idea. Um, the challenge was Caltrans as as it seems to be with most things, but kind of, I I'd like to spend a little time with you guys really delving in and talking about what that concept is. And uh, so that we can all kind of get on the same page and and uh,
Great.
feel it out, see if it's something that we want to pursue.
Great, sounds good. What else do we need to put on that we're forgetting about? Kristen, any thoughts about?
Um, I had mentioned this to Chair Sharon, but we are working on a art donation policy.
Oh, right, 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 right.
Something you described that was brought to the commission in twenty seventeen, so we're just doing some investigative work and
Right.
doing something back.
Great, okay. Um, anything else to add?
Um, the only thing I I'd put on would be, uh, and let me talk to Scott about it. But tentatively, the uh, the uh, Malibu Film Society and getting them back to Malibu. And if there's anything we can do to help. Because I think that's a key issue for the arts in general. And and also to uh, there is the possibility, and something that Peter had raised uh, early on was that uh, if we'd had an art center, and we don't at the moment, but maybe we could have some temporary art for screenings uh, picked out by the uh, by you guys, uh, Fireball and Julia, uh, in the same way, like three or four Malibu artists as you're walking in or something like that. It might not be a bad idea, as long as we can get a place.
You mean for film screenings?
Yeah, yeah. In other words, so that uh, uh, if we do get into the church, we'd have to deal with the Reverend on that. But uh, you know, it might be an interesting way because what we're trying to do is spread it out, spread the yard out, so everybody gets infected.
Okay, so wait a second, so.
So Film Society, uh, it would be the agenda item.
Okay, okay, I'm not exactly sure how. I mean, unless we screen, screen at City Hall or are you talking about um, permit issues for the Film Society? I I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, in other words, uh, uh, what we can do if anything to help the Film Society come back to Malibu.
Okay.
Yeah.
Farball.
Um, I I hosted a, an event at Pebble Beach called the Automotive Film Festival. And it was a, a film festival that focused on vehicles, um, that those type of films. But uh, what was most effective about, what people loved about it the most is that we had an art gallery all through the entrance, through the midway, so that people had to pass through the gallery to get to the festival itself. And it was really even more successful than the film festival itself. So, um, it's it's a great support system. Um, it's not hard to do. I've done it many times. Uh, it's just a matter of figuring out where, where we want the film festival to be held. And then once that's locked in, to be able to implement that is not, not a problem. And I'm, I would support that a hundred percent.
Yeah, I would too. I would too. Julia.
Oh, sorry. I had to send someone waving at me. I'm good.
Oh, okay. Uh, Peter.
Uh, I have one, we still on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have one question regarding the survey. Um, and that is, when we looked at the space directly across, it's a one point two or three acre space, uh, uh, across uh, from uh, super care drugs, we found that there was a soil liquefaction problem.
Yeah.
Uh, which made it prohibitive uh, for a a cultural center. On the basis of inability to get insurance just for. Uh, one, one of the spaces that is proposed in the survey is the Chili Cookoffs site.
Right.
Now, uh, has anyone checked to see if any part of that or all of it has a soil liquefaction issue? Because if it does, we should spell that out. For example, if the land closest to uh, super care has a soil liquefaction issue, but the land further up the hill does not, I think we should specify that in the uh, uh, survey. And if.
Where is, oh, I'm sorry.
I think we need to have this as a fact before we release this. Now, it may turn out that there's no soil liquefaction issue, in which case um, the uh, survey can go out as written. But this is really a simple question, Kristen, if you could ask the people in planning, they know all this and they can probably give you an answer on the phone. But I just think we need to be careful because we don't want to say, let's do it at the Chili Cookoffs, Cookoff site. And then six months later, it turns out it's got this problem.
Isn't that site where Niles and Johansson have uh, plans and a market for a center there?
Yes, but that was also going to go underground and that may have changed the issue of soil liquefaction. We're not proposing that. So I think we ought to know. And I certainly don't think we should rely on a contractor. I'd like to run engineer.
Julia.
And I I just want to have everyone keep in mind that this is just an initial, like, what do you, what would you like? You know, so I don't even know if we have to go specifically because we're not going to be making these decisions ultimately anyway. We're just putting out like, you know, I wouldn't, I really wouldn't want to delay this.
We're not talking about a delay of more than forty five minutes.
Well.
Okay, Barry.
It it it, I I agree with Julia in the sense that let's get it out there and get a sense because uh, John Johansson, when I raised this issue, because I knew down there was some sort of liquefaction problem. He basically said, look, if you want to build it, we can build it, uh, even with liquefaction. Uh, it just costs more money. I think, I think we've delayed this so long and I don't want the city to take over mixing it up with their other survey because I think we'll never get it done. We'll get lost in the shuffle. Because I think we'll never get it done. We'll get lost in the shuffle. I think we just get it out under everybody's nose as soon as we can.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments? Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you very much, Abe. Bye-bye.
Right.
Okay, I second that.
Commissioner Hardeman.
Yes.
Chair Sharon.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
Yes, and thank you, Brittany, for all the work you do also.
Yes, yes.
You're here.
Especially sending that notice every morning so we can find it.